Good afternoon. I hope you're all in the meeting that you intended to be because this is the Public Works and Finance Committee meeting, Moscow City Council for September 14th. On my right is Councilmember Walder Steed. I'm Wayne Kraus. On my left, sitting in for Art Betke, is Councilmember Jim Bowlen. And Gary Redner is back east, and so, sitting in for him is Bill Belknap. So with that, the first item is approval of the minutes of the August 24th meeting. Walder was not here. Jim was not here. But I was here, and I think those meetings are just fine, so I don't know if we can pass those or not without a quorum, but let's say they're fine and move on.
All good.
Is Don here?
Yes.
There he is. Next item is dispersment report for August 2015.
So when it goes around to you, Jim, just cross it out and I'll sign your name. The dispersment's report for -- because you're filling in for Art, and I already have pre-filled out. Dispersions report for the month of August was $2,457,256.93, and we're required by statute to report the dispersions and treasures report, which is submitted before you. I usually break these out in categories, and so, the categories that represent 94% of that total is, first of all, payroll, $962,937. Professional services is $576,079. And of note of that, $500,000 is for the airport realignment project that went to the city of Pullman, so that's why that number's large. Sanitation is $232,585. Contractual payments, which is kind of like what we used to call grants, and it's not really a grant, but it's payments that we pay out to all the heart of the arts and expenditures like that, is $24,153. Heart of the Arts, Humane Society, and the Magar Building, and then janitorial service. Supplies is $59,689. Construction's $82,965, of which, library and the PD Roof Repairs and HCVAC Systems was 24.8 of that number. Vehicles, $182,635. A majority of that money is for a dump truck, and then one pickup. Sierra's about $24,000 of that number. Utilities was $92,983, pretty normal. Equipment, $87,807. And insurance, $3,473, for a total of $2,305,306, which is that 94% that I was talking about. Do you have any questions?
$87,000 for equipment, you know.
That is an array of things. They are...
Big items.
The big, well, a new infield groomer was $23,000. There was a law enforcement video camera for $5,220. Sprinkler system parts, new John Deere skid steer was a big number, $51,000. And the trade-in of that, actually, was more than that, because the trade-in was $18,750, so it was $75,000, or a piece of equipment. And then a cold planter attachment was $20,000. So it's those pieces.
Okay. Jim, any questions?
Sounds pretty regular to me. It's like he's justified his expenditures to me.
So I'll pass this around?
Nope. Okay, we're good.
Yeah. Constantly. He printed my name.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Next item is some discussion on the wastewater treatment plant improvements. This is the Phase 5 design, and it has to do with an amendment on the pre-designed services agreement. Les McDonald presenting.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
For our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, permit for a wastewater treatment plant, we are required to treat our effluent to certain standards and certain cleanliness, if you will. One of the items within that permit requirement has to do with temperature and making sure that we're cooling the water to a certain level before it's discharged into Paradise Creek. So as part of the process of looking at upgrades to our treatment plant, some years ago, we contracted with JUB Engineers, working out of the Lewiston office, to assist us in looking at how we could upgrade our plant to do better treatment for temperature on our effluent. And so, the contract that was in your packet was for that service, and the most of the work in that contract has been completed. It was primarily in the area of identifying what things could be done at the plant, what options we had for future upgrades to address temperature. We looked at, I think, 17 different initial options, and narrowed that down to five, and then to three, and some hybrids, and came up with three or four reasonably viable options, varying in cost and effectiveness, to move forward. Now, that study was based on a temperature standard of 18 degrees Celsius, which is the standard that was in the study from the 1990s. It's called a Total Maximum Daily Load Study, a TMDL study, that establishes the capacity of a water body to absorb pollutants, in essence, and temperature's considered a pollutant in this venue. So the standard of 18 degrees is in the TMDL, that's what's in our permits, that's really based upon what is in the State of Washington Department of Ecology rules, because they are the receiving downstream state, and in close proximity to our treatment plant, and so therefore, the Idaho TMDL process recognized the Washington rules. So we went through that process, came up with a number of options, kind of got to the point of, okay, here's what we think could work, but through that timeframe, there were also things happening out in the regulatory world that we thought could potentially lead to changes in what those regulations may be, or what they are today. And that is actually turning out to be the case, in that the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, is right now working on an update to the Paradise Creek and Palouse River TMDL studies. And for Paradise Creek, they're going to, we believe, recommend a change in the temperature standard for the creek that we discharge our effluent to. That is looking like it's going to be a change to 20.5 degrees Celsius rather than the current 18, and it's based upon a model that they have developed in conjunction with Department of Ecology in Washington, that looks at what would be the natural conditions of the stream, you know, without the impact of our activities, being, you know, man as a whole, mankind, not just the city of Moscow. And so, that model looks at shade potential. If you put shade on the creek that mimicked what was here, you know, 500 years ago, what would the temperature in the creek be? And out of that comes that 20.5 degree number. So based upon that, and, you know, our assessment of where we believe that process is going, we felt it would be appropriate to go back and take a look at those options that were identified in the previous work that I described, and find out what the impacts would be upon those options and their costs if we were to go from an 18-degree standard to a 20.5-degree standard. So that's what this portion of this work would entail. What we're proposing here is that we take the previous contract and just amend it. There is a section within that previous contract for, we called it the Management Reserve, I guess, was the title for it. It had a contract amount of $25,000. The proposed scope of what we're doing now is at the $37,520 range. And so, the contract that was on your table in front of you when you sat down today is an updated version of this previous contract. It's titled as amended, so it's the same contract with a couple of amendments, really just being the title, and then on that second page there in red, you'll see where the dollar amount has changed from the $25,000 to the $37,000. And that is the extent of the change in the contract. What they would do is we would use that Management Reserve number then of $37,000 to proceed with this work today of the 20.5-degree temperature evaluation. I hope that made sense. I'm trying to, there's a lot to this. There's a lot of work that we've been doing with the Watershed Advisory Group that's helping Department of Ecology and DEQ here in Idaho. Lots of background out there, but just kind of in the nutshell, that's what's going on. And the intent of this is to help inform us with respect to what costs would be for these various improvements, so we can better understand what the effects of this work that's currently going on at DEQ would be upon the city of Moscow and the rate bearers.
So the condensed version is, the upgraded contract is $12,500 more than the original contract, in hopes that the study will show that we'll have to spend less money in order to meet the temperature requirements in Paradise Creek, is that...
Right. And it's pretty apparent that the cost will be lower for those improvements, because that two-and-a-half-degree temperature change is a pretty significant amount when it comes to treatment plants.
Walder. Is this contract going to be signed with the striking score in it?
We would take that out. We kept that in just as, you know, for the visual, so you can see where the change was. In the final version of the contract, it'll just be that amended amount and signed.
But JUB already has a contract, signed by Mayor Cheney two years ago or so, identical to this, and you're just changing one number in it. When I've amended contracts, I'm used to just changing the one paragraph that changes the number, rather than a brand-new contract that goes back to square one.
I can address that. We had that conversation this morning. It was a mistake on my part when I asked somebody to ask my help to support staff to amend the contract, didn't get back to her, and she went and revised the contract and just did some clerical stuff. And it doesn't make any difference whether you just do an amendment and just do one section, or if you amend the contract and actually have in the whole document. This way, that is the controlling document. That would be the document, you wouldn't have to have both documents to read what the intent of the document is.
Not to argue with an attorney.
No.
But you can do it either way, unless preferred to do it...
But this document doesn't refer to the original contract. It just says amended. It doesn't give the, I don't, a quick look at it, I don't see where it gives the date of the original contract as a reference. I mean, Cory's sitting over here thinking, "I'm going to get this twice," and I love to come to Moscow, but...
Yeah, it's the amended version of that. It replaces that prior document.
But, Rob, it doesn't refer to the prior document.
It had a reference to the document.
Yeah, I can add that reference to it.
You...
Before council meeting.
Okay, do you see where I'm coming from?
Yeah, I can see where you...
Sorry, Cory.
That won't be an issue.
Easy come, easy go.
And actually, if council would like, this committee would like a direct, I will just do it, a shorter amended contract that just identifies that one paragraph.
That's the way I'm used to doing it, but you're the attorney.
Well, I would just tell you, it was just being cleaned up and making it look like all our other documents. This one was, I think, originally made in 2010.
Whichever you prefer, as long as we're not double contracting.
We're not double contracting. This would replace that. I could just add that.
I understand where you're coming from. It kind of clarifies a little bit, but I'm comfortable with the way this is. Jim?
Yeah, I'm comfortable as long as it, somewhere the original contract's referenced, and so, we know that what it amends...
I can put that up there in the heading, the first part, replacing and refer to that contract.
Okay. With that, then we'll recommend approval. Okay? I can go on the consent agenda. Okay, Dwight Curtis is going to present a lease agreement between the city of Moscow and Sherman Clyde. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I've been up here to the chambers for a while, since I got off the Highway District. I used to come up and see you quite regularly.
You found your way okay?
Huh?
You found your way up here okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Just barely.
Okay, Dwight, what do you got?
Okay, well, here about a month ago, we brought this same item to you for approval, for a lease agreement. This is for Palouse River Drive property. At that time, it was about 28 acres that we were looking at. That's the formable area that's south of the river. I have a map of it up here on the screen for you. The total there in the yellow was about 28 acres. Since that time, some things came to mind from Mr. Clyde, that approximately about eight acres of that is washed out almost every year, or so little seed comes to harvest that it's hardly worth its time, other than just keeping the weeds down in it. So he's asked that we reduce the leased land to 20 acres, and also, because it does flood in the spring, it didn't used to when they had the berm on there, and the city removed the berm back in, I think, 2003. And so now, the water comes in and it goes out, but he can't get in there in the springtime with his equipment to plant it, so he's forced to plant always in the fall. Well, farmers, you know, they rotate spring and fall a lot, and it's to control certain types of weeds and grasses. And so, since he has to plant in the fall, in order to control those grasses, every so many years, he has to leave it fallow, so that he can go in and do the appropriate spraying. So we've also added language in there that on those years that he needs to leave it fallow, that he would not be paying a lease fee for that particular year. And so, those are the two changes. It's still at $70 an acre. The request, the new request, is at 20 acres instead of 28, and that no fee for those years that it's left fallow.
Why'd we take the berm out?
Well...
City wanted to take it out. I don't know.
Not either.
In fact, they wanted to place a dump, and they dumped part of it on mine and one thing, and other, and one thing, and other, but as soon as they bought it for a park, well, they wanted it out of there.
Well, when you...
They wanted to take and level the bank out, slope the bank down to the creek and go ahead.
Yeah. When you remove the berm, it allows the water to more quickly come in and more quickly leave. When the berm's there, it can create a dam, basically, so any water that would get over it just hangs there forever. And it's a pretty standard practice when you've got a berm like that, when they start turning it into parkland, that you want the water to flow through as quickly as possible. But it does have an effect on farm...
The berm was taken out in anticipation of turning it into a park, but since we didn't, now the berm's gone, and...
Yes.
What would it take to put a berm back in there again?
And see, since...
No idea.
Since Germer's filled that in down below, right below the, right below there, over toward the road there, well, he's filled that whole thing in there and one thing, and other, and the water used to go down in there and drain out of the farmland there, but he's filled that in, and it won't go nowhere, it just dams up, and there it sits. And after that, wheat's been under the water too long, why, you don't have wheat.
Yeah.
That's the end of it. It just drowns out in one thing, and other, when it floods in one thing, and other. In fact, in fact, I wish we'd go back to where I didn't even have to pay any cash rent, I'll tell you that, because there's some years on there, just like this year, I was just telling Dwight that, right now, with the flood and the crop in one thing, and another, without even paying cash rent, I've lost $700 off of that.
Would it be better just leaving it fallow all the time, then, and not...
Well, no. I mean, I don't mind farming it, but when I have to start paying cash rent, because I don't know exactly when I'm going to get off of there, I mean, if that floods in one thing, and other, I've had it go down in there and not get much crop off of half of that down in there, when the water sits in there, you know, and there's nothing I can do about it, because, and a lot of times, what happens is, if we get a bunch of snow in one thing, and other, and that creek floods, why, then the water, the snow melts out into that cropland and flat, and it'll sit there until the creek drains, so it can drain back into the creek in one thing, and other. So that's where, that's what the problem is, right there, with that ground, since the berm was taken out. But like I say, the reason...
How often does that happen, Sherman?
Pardon?
How often does that happen, where you come out a net loss? Out of 10 years of farming, how many years you think you'd have a net loss?
Well, when I had the berm there, I never had no problems.
But now, without the berm...
But since now, why, it's, here a couple, three years ago, when we had all that flood and one thing, and other, well, I didn't get much of anything off of there, because it just stayed too wet in one thing, and other, down in there. I got the weed sprayed in one thing, and there finally. Couldn't get in there until June to even get the weed sprayed, because the sprayer sink out of sight out there. Because, see, it's kind of sub-irrigated down there, and that's the reason the city kind of wanted for a park to begin with, you know, down in there.
So if we were to take the eight acres off of there, at $70 an acre is what the cash rent, the numbers in the proposed contract, correct? So you're talking about $560 a year, and we couldn't replace the berm for that, I'm quite certain, you know, that would cost a lot. I think it's better to, probably better to just have him not pay for what can't be consistently farmed, it would seem like.
It seemed like a fair request, both the leaving it fallow, I mean, that's almost a necessity if it's going to be farmed, and then also, if there's no profit to be made, there's not a lot of reason for him to do it, other than the weed control. If you don't do the weed control, then that affects the other parts of his crop, too, so it's sort of what, you know...
Do you farm the surrounding ground, too, Sherman?
Pardon?
You farm the surrounding ground, or you just have that little piece you have to come from?
Just a little bit over there, just a little bit. Now, I don't farm the, some of that around there anymore.
So you have to bring your machinery over there just for those 20 acres, basically?
Oh, no, I got some more down there.
Oh, close by?
Yeah, I got some more down there, but I don't...
Not adjacent, though.
Right, but close enough that it's not?
Well, our shop and stuff's right there, so I'm not very far. I mean, I'm right there to farm it anyway.
If we didn't farm the 20 acres, would you said, "You know what, just going to leave it, let it go fallow," then the city'd be responsible for weed control? You got any kind of an idea what our, what the city's cost to maintain weed control would be?
I do not. I do not. Do you know what the weed, how much in cost you spray for weeds?
How much it costs to spray?
That 20 acres...
Well, if you put 20 bucks an acre, it costs 20 bucks an acre for grass herbicide this alone, and it'll probably cost another 30 or 40 if you get weed, want the right weed control, because you're going to have dog fill and everything else, and you're going to have quite a problem.
My question, Sherman, is if that was not farmed at all, if it's just allowed to go fallow, then the city would be responsible for just weed control in it?
Right.
What would it cost just to control the weeds on fallow, on 20 acres of fallow land?
Well, you're probably going to have to spray it maybe two or three times, because you haven't got nothing to compete against the weeds. And you can go out there and spray it, and then the weeds will still come back on you. So, I mean, you could have, I mean, you could have up to $100 when you're, before you're done, time you pay a machine to go in there.
Per acre? No.
Pardon?
$100...
Per acre?
Per acre.
Yeah, this, it's not...
Sherman, how much do we need to pay you to keep farming this?
Pardon?
How much do we need to pay you to keep farming this?
How much do you need to pay me?
Pay you to keep farming this.
What this is starting to sound like, we're going to need to pay you.
Just don't charge me any cash rent, no, and I take care of the rest of it, and that'll just take a chance.
But you've just told us why it's such a burden on you to fool with it.
Pardon?
You've just told us why it's such a burden to fool with it.
No, I didn't say, I didn't say I wouldn't, I mean, I've been fooling with it, that's no problem, but I haven't had to pay cash rent out, is what I'm saying.
Well, I'm, if it ain't...
And then there's another...
If it ain't cotton of corn, I don't know what it is, so I can't help you.
But there's another little problem you got down there, you know.
What's that?
There's no, there's no access to that ground, unless you go across Germer. You can't get in there.
So what are you telling us?
I'm just telling you, unless you get a permission to Germer, you cannot, you couldn't go in there to spray it or do nothing, because it's isolated. There's no road into that.
Oh, build a bridge. That was only, what, $20,000 just to build a bridge?
If you build a bridge, you can get in there.
Like a million bucks.
But you've got to go through somebody else to get in there.
You know, here's my thoughts on this. I don't know what you guys think, but for 1,400 bucks, I think we just leave things like they are, let's not bother charging him anything for it. I'm going to personally recommend not approving this lease agreement. Let her go, just keep things like they are. That's one man's opinion.
My thoughts on it are that if Sherman wants to farm it, that's great.
Yep.
But maybe it shouldn't be a set number. Maybe if Sherman makes money on it, then maybe he owes the city, the taxpayers of the city of Moscow, some money. If he doesn't make any money, then he shouldn't owe any rent. In other words, it would be based on the yield and the price. If you make money, are you, you wouldn't object to pay in rent on it, would you?
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I wouldn't object to it, then, if I could make some money on it, but I just, I never know what's going to happen, you know? I don't know how many bushels I'm even going to get off of down there.
Right. You know, farming's always a risk, but at the same time, if you do, it's possible to set up a share-crop kind of thing, where if you make money, you pay a certain small percentage of that to the city, so that the taxpayers are getting something for their land that you make money off of, but otherwise, you don't. What do you think of that, Dwight?
That's kind of a, that's kind of a hard deal to...
Well, you know how much...
I wish we'd just go back to the way we had it, because we had a good deal there and one thing, and then I took care of the weeds and one thing, and other, and if it...
Rod.
If it flooded a half...
Rod's going to come up and visit with us about this a little bit.
You a farmer, Rod?
I'm not a farmer, but if, the contract you're trying to structure, I mean, there's going to be a lot of staff time, a lot of hours, just monitoring this for 1,400 dollars. I mean, overall, you'd try to figure out how much is paid each year to keep it weed-free, but then, on average, how much money does he make, yield off it? And then, that's probably where you should come up with the price, and we thought that that was close to where we were.
When I lose money, does the city pay me, then?
What about the years when you make, you know, more money?
What's that?
Is there years you make more money?
Boy...
How about over the last, you might ask the question somewhere, you know, like over the last 10 to 20 years, how much money has been made on, you know, the 20 acres there?
Well, of course, I owned it then, so it'd have to be when it was sold back in, what was it, 2006 or something?
Two, three. Three.
About in there.
Twelve years ago.
Yeah.
Dwight, you're the Parks guy, how about if we just planted it all in grass and made a dog park out of it?
There's a thought.
No access.
Dogs can cross the creek.
But I guess my, what I'm wondering is, how are you going to get in there?
Well, it'd be easy to build a little bridge.
Pardon?
A little, you could build a little bridge there, or a fort, and drive the machinery in there and leave it.
You'd have to build a pretty good-sized bridge to get in there with the equipment to farm it, though.
Well, we're not talking about farming, we're just talking about planting the grass and then, and mowing it as a park. That's the suggestion I'm making there.
Yeah.
How many bushels of wheat does that yield per acre?
Pardon?
How many bushels of wheat does that yield per acre on the average? You getting 100 bushel an acre?
I got 45 this year.
45 this year, per acre?
It's not very good land, and...
Because I recrop in... Because I recrop and one thing or another, and you start recropping, you're, you're lucky if you get 60 bushels.
Well, I don't know how that land turns, so.
Because you can't just keep recropping and recropping and one thing or other, if you can go back in there and put a spring crop like Gabonzo's, like Walter was talking about, the Gabonzo's, lentils and a few things like that, then you got a rotation there, but you can't get in there, then. Early enough, the spring crop won't do nothing, it'd just, that hot weather'd hit it, and you wouldn't get nothing off of there.
How do you get in there now? Is Larry, you just ask Larry?
I go across Larry's.
Well, I still stand by my, my feelings on it. What do you think?
I'm, I'm not willing to vote to take the city of Moscow owned land and let a farmer have it to farm and make money when he can and when he can't. I mean, I don't, I feel some obligation to the citizens that own it. I think it's a pig and a poke in the first place, but that's another conversation.
That's what I'm thinking. You two recommend approval?
I didn't recommend approval, I just said, I'm not, I'm not willing to agree to, to just let a farmer farm it.
You want to send it back to staff to have them rework it?
I didn't, what did you say?
I said, I'm not, I'm not willing to agree to just let a farmer farm it. It's, it's public property.
He wants something out of it.
That must have some value, or you wouldn't fool with it, Sherman. I'm not saying you're getting rich, I'm not suggesting that at all, and I know there are years when farmers don't make money, but you've farmed it for 13 years, and you must, if you, if it wasn't worth something to you, you wouldn't fool with it. I think, I mean, I wouldn't.
When I, when they, when we worked this out, I kind of agreed that I'd take care of the weeds, so I, that's what I done, even if I lose money in one thing or other, I take care of the weeds out there and one thing or another. Because it isn't just the weeds in the farm ground, there's weeds along the ditches and everything else, that there's thistles and stuff that needs to be sprayed, but it's kind of hard to spray it now, since PCEI come out there and put all that stuff in and one thing or other, because they don't want you to even spray now. And you can't let your thistles grow, and, and maybe the city can, but I can't, being a farmer. Morning Glory, Morning Glory gets going, used to be a lot of Morning Glory out there, and I've got rid of it and one thing or another. There's a lot involved.
Dwight, how do we deal with the weeds in the, along the creek where, where it's not farmed and?
Yeah, well, right now, all the weed control out there is done, from Sherman.
And PCEI is doing a project there, but they don't control any weeds?
They don't spray.
Yeah, I mean, they planted, and they monitor what they planted, and that's, that's about it, but I mean, that was, that's been a lot of years ago already, it's just.
Dwight, who does the weeds on the north side of the creek?
Um, Sherman, he's, I mean, you know, where the cyclocross deal is, I mean, he's got that, too, it's just that that, um, he, he, you know, cuts that for hay, and, and will still be able to during the, you know, with the cro, you know, with the course there.
So, so he's haying the cyclocross area?
Will be.
Which is not even part of what we're talking about.
Correct, but as part of that takes care of the weeds.
The value and the hay on that, I assume.
Let's go back to staff with it. If we dig, the worse we get here.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
I, we're going to do one or two things, we're either going to, I think we're either going to not approve this, but we're going to have staff to take it back, and either figure something out, or just let it go, one or the other, but I don't like it the way it is.
Quick question, Dwight, so will Sherman continue to farm the entire 28 acres, but the rate will be based on the 20?
Yes.
So the agreement provides for him to crop only 20 acres, so should that be revised to include the entire 28, but then just reduce the per acre rent to equalize out to the 20?
The 28 doesn't include the cyclocross.
Understand, I do understand that, I'm just focusing on that, we can talk about cyclocross.
We left the, we left the, at, I mean, it's just at the 20 acres is what we're considering, but he would still be working the 28 to keep the weeds off of that.
But it might be cleaner in the contract to give him the right to farm the 28, but only charge 50 an acre, which would equate to the same $1,400 per year, that way he has the right to farm it, clearly in the contract.
That was what originally was in the contract, was to do that, but then came forward that there's.
But it was, it was at 70.
But it's at 70 on that 8, so if you reduce the overall, if you did 28 at 50 per acre, it would equate to the 1,400, which is the same as the 20 acres at 70, that way, the contract covers the entire area of operation, and we're just averaging out the rent to take into consideration the low productivity of that wet lying area.
I'd, I'd like to go back to staff and let them come up with a, with a proposal for the best way to manage our property out there.
We thought we had already done that, so.
Apparently not.
We, we did as we were directed to do, so.
If, if we might, get some guidance from the committee about specifically what you would like to see addressed. I mean, one, one element could be to ensure that it's clear that the 28 acres is available for, for the farming, but we could adjust the rates to something that Mr. Clyde feels is more comparable or more appropriate for the property. What else would you like, would you like to see the lease also address the hay cropping of the property on the north side of the river? And the exchange or compensation for that could be just for the weed control activities that happen there. Not that it requires any additional, but it could be that that's just to.
Bill, I don't, I don't mind something equitable, but I don't want to meet a citizen down at the corner of walk and don't walk, and want to know, why is a farmer working city land, and just getting nothing for it? I don't have an answer for that.
No, and I.
Because he's keeping down the weeds? I, I can't even believe that answer.
Well.
And maybe that's what it is, maybe that's all farmers do is keep down weeds, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I was just referring to the portion on the north, that's, that's not a large, not a large land area.
We, we've got land out there that we've got to contend with.
Correct. And I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to understand is, what does a committee wish to see addressed in the agreement?
If we sell the land back.
Like I was telling, like I was telling.
Let's just get rid of it.
Already lost 700 on it, and if I pay 14.
Again, if I could get some direction from the committee.
You like what I just said, I can tell.
If I could get some direction, I mean, if it's a question of making sure that all areas are covered, and that there is a adequate compensation, whether it's services rendered and weed control, or whether it's fee paid for lease of the acreage, I mean, are you looking for an agreement that addresses all the activities that are happening on both north and the south?
But see, but see, this year I've already lost $700 without even paying the cash rent, which is 21, and so, what I'm saying is, then, I got another year that I'm hoping to make, get that back.
Right.
Make it back, but if I have to keep paying 1,400, was, and the price of wheat, what it is right now, why, it was okay when wheat was up $7 or something like that, but wheat's four and a half now, and it don't even cover the expenses right now.
So the agreement that staff brought forward at the 1,400 per year is not an acceptable proposal?
Well, it's pretty steep right now, because I don't know what I'm going to get off of there. If I knew the exact number of bushels off of there, that makes a lot of difference. If I knew I was going to get 100 bushel every year, at four and a half, why, that'd be fine.
Rod, trade, trade places with Don, he's got a comment, but hang loose, yeah.
Don just wants to make sure that we don't put him in the business of auditing Sherman's farm.
Yeah, well, um, being an owner of, I'm going to speak, not as a finance director at this point, but as a, as a, I have 10 acres myself.
Gentleman farmer.
And I also have flat ground, just like what Sherman's farming right now, and what's hard for me, and, and I've had farmers come over for the last 13 years coming over, and I've only charged one time, and I've had five different farmers farm that piece, and the reason for it is because it's hard to get somebody to come out to do a small piece, like 10 to 20 acres. They just will not come out and move their equipment. We're fortunate to have Sherman here, because he's right next door, and so, what I'd rather see, if we remand it back to staff, is the direction, Bill, is that, and I propose it to you three, is that he continues to do weed management for 1,400 bucks, we spend 700 bucks out here on Alturis Park for weed management and, and mowing the lawns, basically that's what I'm calling it. So, um, anyway, I'm just suggesting that we might, might look at trading the, the weed management versus the, um, the, the farming piece, because 1,400 bucks, and we're spending 700 out here already in Alturis, so, that's just one thought that he might think about.
But Alturis has to be mowed, not just weed control.
Well, but he's mowing when he cuts the wheat, right? I mean, in a way, he's doing that, plus he's doing.
It's doing weed control, we're not mowing it.
And he's also doing the weed control for both sides of the creek. Anyway, just a thought, so.
If I may just add, maybe the staff should take it back, if you want to, and direct the staff to maybe figure out what the equities are, and bring that forward under a new contract or something more acceptable between the parties, because right now, we seem to be at an impasse of what it should be the.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be something done, and it's going to, I guess it's going to have to go back to staff, because where I'm at right now, I, I personally wouldn't approve it, so that's where I'm at.
I would like to see staff come up with something that addresses the option of charging based on what the land produces every year, so that we're not putting Sherman in a position where he's going to lose money based on a set fee, but if he does well, we do well, also, if wheat goes back up to 10 bucks, we still, we get a little more, too. I think, I agree with Walter, is, we have to do something with this, it's a, it's an asset of the citizens of Moscow, and we just can't allow it to, someone to make money off of it without some renumeration for that, that's not.
Well, recognizing some of the risk of farming.
Right, and, and I'd like to see us come up with a, with an option where we do plant it in grass and mow it and use it as a dog park, so the citizens of Moscow get some use out of it. What's, how is that as an option?
Something we can discuss that at a later date. Right now, we have to concern ourselves with what's on the agenda, and that has to do with this lease agreement with Mr. Clyde. And so, at this point in time, this committee is going to recommend moving it back to staff to try to close this up a little bit tighter. I'd like staff to also make a determination as to, with this small amount of land, as much as there is, if there is in fact a possible trade-off between the fact that it is a small parcel, that he is farming, some years he makes money, some years he doesn't make money, but he always takes care of the weed control, not only in that, but the 8 acres that is used as a cyclocross, so is there in fact a trade-off there? So, it's going to go back to staff and for further recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you. Now, we're going to talk about it some more, Sherman.
Okay, okay, well, thank you.
Dwight, you're not leaving us.
Well, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sherman.
Okay, next item, we're actually, these are, we're going to combine, um, the next two items, I get back to where I wanted to be, and that was items five and six, one was the Indian Hills Park design adoption request, and number six was the Atani Park design adoption request. The, the two items are very, very similar in context, with just some different numbers, and so Dwight's just going to propose, going to present both of these, but it'll be proposed as one item on the agenda.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, the first item will be Indian Hills Park, as you recall, it's the area that's right behind where the old Tidymans building was, and we had gone through a considerable process to come up with the actual acreage, part of it was parkland dedication, part of it was donated by the Thompson family, there were some funds donated by Mr. Bill Parks toward the partial purchase of another lot, and then the other part was from the city, city funds to pay for that. Ended up with 1.2 acres, and the process that we used for this design is, we started out in May, and went through June, had three different public design workshops, and, and we did this for each of the two parks, and separately, and each one was an, it was an evolutionary process, getting information to start with what people wanted, second one was to revise and work it a little bit more, and then the third one was to come back with basically the, the final design that, between what the citizens liked and, or wanted, and what was feasible and doable through the landscape architects. Then we brought this again, presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission, both the designs, both were recommended for approval to the city council by the Parks and Recreation Department. And then, of course, today, well, bringing it to you, and hoping that you'll have a recommendation to adopt these for the city council meeting for next week. And we, we went through what we considered extraordinary measures to try to get as many people involved in this as we could, we sent out personalized mailings to basically the regions around each of these two parks, of the citizens that already live there, as well as the emails, the city websites, and the newspaper, everything we could get, we, we tried to get people out here. And so, we, we think it was, at least that part was done very well, and, and they were pretty interesting exercises. The very beginning.
What was your turnout?
Um, we ended up between, it wasn't high turnout, so, you know, 15-ish in that, yeah. Sometimes we had a little bit more.
15-ish or 50-ish?
15-ish.
One five.
Small, yeah. And a lot of them were people that lived right there close, especially on the, uh, Atani Park. And, so it started out with the different things that you have to look at when you're looking at park design, where does the sun come from, which way do the winds blow, where you get the most, you know, slope, things like that, where your streets are, what, what are your site conditions? And so, you can see, this was the first site analysis that they did, you can see where the sun is compared to, to where all this works out, you have Blaine right here, and Indian Hills Drive, and of course, these will be residences all across here, and the Bennett compound is right here. And so through that first workshop, they broke it down into groups, and each group came up with their own ideas on what they wanted, and you can see, I mean, a little bit messy, but it was, it was actually pretty cool. You can see things that were considered, even a dog run, shelters, the playgrounds, a lot of the typical things you find in a neighborhood park, pathways, plantings, things like that. We also had to look at ADA, this particular park has some slope to it. And the third design, and this was actually the one that caught the most attention toward the end. And concept C, this was basically based on this, and with some of the, the concept As and Bs included in it. You can see things were separated out, you have the larger kids playground here, the smaller kids playground here, a restroom, park shelter type area with plaza, so you could be there and be watching both sides, you also have the view shed through here, and areas to sit and watch, and I think, I think right here, they were, I think that was going to be some artwork type stuff, entryways, and natural grasslands toward the bottoms, buffer areas along there where the residents would be. And that was, that was the final concept before the last presentation. And then, of course, when they met on June 2nd, and went through all of that, talking with the residents, made some work, changes to the design, they wanted the, I mean, it seemed a little bit crazy to split these up, if you were a parent and you had an older kid and a younger kid, makes it a little difficult to watch both of them, so they wanted things moved over together, a little bit of movement of the park shelter, so that all that would fit. And basically, this is what you ended up with right here. Uh, well, actually.
That's, that's not.
Yeah, that, that's the final one right there, yeah. So, yeah, it's hard to keep track of where they're, everything's preferred until the end, and then it's preferred again. So, anyway, you see the playground was all consolidated, moved the restroom and pavilion over, pathways are still there, ADA. over. Pathways are still there, ADA compliant. Found that up here in the northwestern corner, because of the, the dip down to the road, it wasn't really very feasible to put an entryway there except for stairs. So, they wanted to just have the two entryways, and kept the natural grasses toward the bottom, and a little bit of artwork, sign work down toward the bottom, view sheds across here, and some open space. It was, this part of the whole property was, it's, it's sort of on a ridge, and it was the flattest area to actually work with. That's why you see the majority of the things consolidated there. And of course, the open space down toward the bottom.
What is that down on the southwest corner? I mean, it's artwork, but what's the actual?
This here? Um, there's a sign that would be the Indian Hills Park sign. This would be a lot of floral type things, gardening area. Make it attractive. If a person wanted some art there. But I think up here is where they were actually thinking about the, an actual art piece.
And is the park, and the shelter, is that a combination?
This is.
Shelter, restroom?
Yes.
Picnic shelter and restroom?
Yes. And one of the things we talked about in, in the meetings was that, I mean, this is conceptual, so there's, there's still a lot of room to tweak some things, but at least you have a plan to go by. This could very well work out if, for example, we needed to phase this in, because as you, as you saw probably in your packets, it is a spendy little puppy. It might be a deal where you have a restroom that's separate from the, the pavilion. So one year, you might have one, and the other one put in the next year, or something like that. So, but it would be in the similar location, serving the similar purpose, so.
So I'm assuming that the restrooms are, itself is a pretty small, compact unit, considering you're at cost estimates, $126,000 for restrooms and a pavilion?
Yes. The, what he, what the architect originally presented was, was a lot higher end, and just based on the information from when we were working on the downtown restroom project, we brought that back to being a single, you know, unisex restroom facility, and, and I had him separate that pavilion out. So, it's, it's just a little cheaper way to go. And so, like I say, conceptual, that some of those costs could go down, some could go up, just depends on what the pricing is at that time. And, but I think fairly close on where things are.
Dwight, your play structure nearest the pavilion. What age is that? The title got cut off on our copy.
Oh, I'm sorry. It'd be about five to 12-year-old.
Okay, and the other one's two to five?
Two to five, and then swing set up in the upper left.
Okay.
Swing sets, of course, they, they're very popular, but they're also the most expensive pieces of a playground, because of the service area that, that they take. And so, expensive, but they're very popular, and you can serve all the age groups with, with one swing area, so. And this was the final design. The costs, you can see, it's about $650,000. And it is a spendy puppy, but one of the interesting things about these parks is that this could have been a four-acre park, and it might have cost fairly close to the same amount to develop, because all your high-cost items are all condensed in these smaller ones, where in a bigger one, you'd have the same stuff, just more acreage.
That's your prices. We need to explain this, because it says, under project administration, architects and engineering fees, and you're contracting with the mob?
I think that's supposed to be mobility.
What does MLB stand for?
Mobilization.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't catch that. That's pretty good. I didn't write that, though. But that's good. We, we contract with the mob.
Cadillac design?
Well, I do, I wouldn't say it's Cadillac, but at the same time, we put down what the citizens wanted. And we did talk about things being expensive, and, but at the same time, you're only gonna build this park once, hopefully, and if it's maintained, you know, it should last for many, many, many lifetimes. And...
No, you change that play equipment regularly. This stuff lasts a long time.
Yeah, the facilities should last, playgrounds.
Playground, we've, we've changed out every playground in town since I've been on the council.
Yes.
Because of new rules, regs?
Uh, and, and old worn out, yeah.
Old, old worn out.
That stuff that took out was already as old as you are. They had to change it.
Yeah, you probably played on it when you were a kid, right? No?
Wasn't here.
So, like anything, some things, some things do wear out.
I understand, I understand, the walkways and the grass areas, and a lot of that stuff, it's like East City Park, once it's there, it stays there.
Yep.
Yeah, I get that.
So, and then the last slide that we had on this, just basically details out some of those amenities, and what they are. Before I move on to Atani, do you have any questions about this one?
You, you made a comment to me that you were, did you say you were surprised that the, the neighborhoods wanted restrooms in these small parks?
When we...
You had not anticipated that?
I did not anticipate that. I just, I'm not sure why. Just small, I just didn't expect the playgrounds, but, or the restrooms, I'm sorry. But people wanted restrooms. And...
You thought they would be close enough to walk home if you needed to go, or?
Yeah. This is what I was thinking, just small, people from the neighborhood are gonna walk over there. But at the same time, you're there with your little kids, they have to go to the restroom, or, that was brought up several times in our meetings, you know, once we have these pavilions, just like other parks with pavilions, people, you know, they'll be rented out for special events and things.
People will be there for three or four hours.
So you bring over, you know, four or five families to have a little, you know, birthday party, and...
Exactly. That's what I was gonna say. There's gonna be, they'd be utilized for family reunions and so on and so forth, where...
So, it made, it made good sense. I thought it made really good sense. It just, if you remember a couple of years ago, when I did the parks forecasting model for you, the prices that we had in there did not include restrooms for some of these little parks. So when we do the adjustments to them, we're gonna put that back in there.
Now, Frontier does not have a pavilion or a restroom, is that correct?
Correct.
How many acres, how big is it?
Anderson Frontier?
How big is Frontier?
It's about eight acres.
That big?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna ask you what it costs to develop it, 'cause that was a long time ago.
Well, Anderson Frontier was kind of a bizarre one. It has lots of sections that were put together over time.
See, this is only a little over one acre.
Yes, 1.2 acres.
Atani's even smaller.
So what's the difference with Atani? Same, same type of neighborhood input, different people?
Yes.
Little cheaper price, but not much?
Little, smaller, a little, little less expensive, not much.
Gee, look at the difference in the, only $77,000 for the pavilion and restroom.
Jack that up and take it downtown.
Exactly. $50,000 cheaper than...
Okay, um, well, process-wise, this was all the same. Here's a, a map of where that's at. And Mosher Park, if you recall, that piece of property is up over here, and across the field. And actually, this piece of property came from that. It was a little offshoot of property. And to make it work better with some plating, and also, this area was really lacking in any kind of park facilities, we were able to do a change with Mr. Atani, and this is what we came up with. And just, I don't have it on here, but you can see where that little walking path is there. We have a 10-foot walking path that's actually part of this property, that will connect to that. So, same, same process. You see the analysis on how things worked, and in some ways, I mean, it's almost identical in some ways. Went through the process of the individual, you know, groups putting in what they wanted. This particular site has something that the other one doesn't. You can kind of see here through that shadow, there's actually an overhead power line there. So it restricts us on some of the things that we have to, that we can do there. So, you'll see a lot of the pathway type things going through there.
Dwight, that, that path that you referred to on the previous drawing, is that, is that used by the neighborhood now to get from one place to the other? What is, what?
Looks like it.
Is it, is it a, is it a kid's path? Is it to go to school? What is it?
At the very moment, I couldn't tell you. This is a different property now than it was when this, this overhead was taken. I mean, there's actually houses, houses being built there, and that's all paved.
And that's pretty old, actually.
Yeah. But there used to be a drainage, a retention pond in there, a makeshift detention pond. The kids used it as kind of their own little mini cyclocross area, and played a lot in there. And I don't know if, I mean, there's a pathway that comes all the way across that property, and I don't know if that was just from kids or what.
May I ask somebody that lives up there who nodded that he knows what that path is to tell us real quick?
Anybody from Atani?
Corey, would you, can you tell us, would you mind?
Yeah.
Just, yeah, you need to come up. Just, just for purposes of, what is the present use of that path?
It's basically a pathway for the, the school kids along Sixth Street to make it over to McDonald's School. It connects into Jansen, up over the hill to Mosher.
Kids go this way?
Yeah.
So it's an unimproved dirt path?
Improved dirt path. Somebody hauled a load of wood chips in there and threw it down to keep the mud off the kids' feet, five, six years ago. But it's just the kids, kids have worn a path through there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So you didn't figure on improving that path any, then, to get those folks to the park, huh?
Well, it'll be paved.
Oh, it will be?
Oh, yeah. Yep. And so, just going through the conceptuals that the groups went through, playgrounds, restrooms, some play areas. There is a little bit of a slope right here. Concept B, I think, was the one that had the most interest, using this, kind of a badminton volleyball type area, grass, but there's enough slope to it. They thought for little tiny kids, it would be a good winter time sledding area. Restroom, pavilion, same concept right here, along with pathway. Even though it's not a straight path, it meanders in and out of where the play areas would be. And of course, this is still back in the conceptual time. And you'll see a, kind of an unimproved pathway going up and around this. This was, this actually had quite a bit of discussion, you know, would this be a walking pathway? Would it be for kids with their bikes? And what do you do when you, you know, 'cause it wouldn't be very big, and it'd probably be wood chips or something. So what do you do when you have bikes and people walking on, on a small path and things like that? So...
But just a dirt, dirt path?
Probably would have to have chips or something, but yeah, unimproved.
Unimproved, okay, not paved.
Yeah. And, of course, went back through after the second, after the second workshop, and then made their assessments on what they came up with during the other, and made those changes. You can see a lot of the things that were discussed. That multi-purpose surface area, we did talk about, it was a very small area to pack so much stuff in there. But as you could see from the, you know, the designs, I mean, it actually looks pretty nice. This was still back in the preliminary stage. Actually had a basketball court in there, half-court. Based on the adjustments from the last meeting, they wanted to ensure that central circulation walk is wide enough to accommodate the walkers. And, and then this is what, what we came up with. And so...
Tell me what these, those blue arrows, what do they represent?
That shows the slope.
Okay.
If you were on the sledding hill area. So winter time, of course, you wouldn't be using this area for tennis, or soccer, or any, or what do you call it? Volleyball, anything like that. So, we turned it into a sledding, small sledding hill. I'm not usually very comfortable with sledding hills. They, they are just really bad news health-wise, but this one's so small, I didn't have a lot of concern about this. And of course, cost this one, about $575-ish, and then the last had the detailed amenities.
So Dwight?
Yes, sir.
I like the pretty pictures. I can't argue with the elements. I don't live there. I appreciate the input that you did get, or tried to get, and that that you did get. What are you looking for from us? What, what, if we all vote yes, what did we just agree to?
You just agreed to what the concept of this park would look like, and in general, what we'd go into it. And then, at that point, now we start working on a strategy for funding. And, and of course, at that point, then, then you get into the more details of, would that be a separate restroom facility? Would it be a combined? Yeah, you asked about Cadillac. I mean, you know, where do you make those changes if, if necessary at all, and based on your strategy of funding? You know, we, there's different ways that this can be done. I mean, if, if you lucked out and had somebody with a lot of money donate, and paid for it all, it just doesn't really matter, as long as you could afford to maintain it later, right? And then, but if it's coming out of the taxpayers' pockets, then you're talking, likely, having to phase this in. And it could take several years, because just the downtown restroom project, just is a perfect example. I mean, some of those items are very, very expensive, even small ones. I mean, an $80,000 bathroom is, that's a lot of money. And, but that's one piece of the entire puzzle, right? I mean, playgrounds now are getting up there around 100 grand. So, there's only so much to go around. So the other option, and the one that I would, would suspect would be the route that we would probably want to take a serious look at, and that would be some bonding capacity. And this is two designs, and we've got two more that'll be coming online. The designs coming back to you guys, probably right around the first of the year. And that'll be four parks with designs that are basically ready to go when you have funding. And possibly a fifth one, the one over on Baker Street, if we ever get that decided where they actually want to put it. And...
Lola Clyde?
Lola Clyde's one of those top four.
The four, who's the...
And Milton Arthur, the one out by the old slurp and burp. That, and Lola Clyde would be the ones that'll start this October. And...
So, if I, if I may, a couple, a couple of questions, Wayne. If, if we were to, to, to agree to this, and send it to council on consent or not, and the council approves it, how binding are we putting that on future councils for, well, wait a minute, back in 2015, they voted there was gonna be a sledding hill on this one, and now we don't see it in the final design? Are we, are we, are we committing based upon the work you've done and the, and the drawings we've got, that, I heard you talk about sliding the pavilion around a little bit or whatever, but I guess I'm a little bit confused about exactly what we're...
What are we committing to?
I mean, I'm all for parks. Let's do parks. Let's do these two parks. I can vote for that right now. How do we pay for it? I don't know that. And whether or not it's exactly these designs or not, I don't know that I can say that to a council 10 years from now that might find that donated money.
You know, I, I know where you're coming from, and I think the answer to that is...
And I'm a fan. I'm all for this.
I mean, I'm ready to approve this. I think it's fine. I think it's fine. I think these are great, these are great concepts, you know? And I think that's what we're approving is the conceptual design of these two parks. I like it. I think that something that would last forever. And I think they would be tremendous attributes to the neighborhoods. However, I have to say that in the 10 years I've been around doing this, Lola Clyde Park looks exactly the same now as it did 10 years ago. And so, and, and this is the thing that we've talked about is that, you know, we have all this parkland dedication that we have. And every neighborhood stands on its own in their parkland dedications and, and their desires to have parks. Here's a prime example of Atani and Indian Hills. I mean, they're, they're going to be saying, hey, we got a design. When are we going to build it? And we don't have the money to do, we haven't even had the money to do Lola Clyde. We managed to put a little pocket park in over on, on Lily, you know? So I agree with you. I mean, how do we go about do this? It looks to me like if we're going to do it with, with tax money, is that it'll have to be progressive. You know, it'll have to be a staged thing for each park. Grading is done, grass and irrigation systems may be put in, then later on, something else. Unless the council wants to step up and do a big bond and try to get that passed, you know? But I think our goal here today is simply what it says, review and recommend the adaption, adoption, which I think we're certainly wanting to do that.
Without, without too much of a binding commitment on the future.
Yeah, no binding commitment in the future.
Can't be because we're not funding it. We're just, we're just okaying the design. Yeah, we're not okaying the funding on it because we don't know where it's going to come from.
Correct. Let me, let me ask you this, Wayne, and maybe Bill and not ignoring Jim, but what if the council were to direct staff to look toward budgeting 100,000 a year toward future park construction? I mean, in 10 years, you could build, except for inflation, these two, which is more than we've done with Lola Clyde over the past 10 years. Or budget 125 a year. And, and then you get into the, get into the discussion. I see some people in the audience from at least one of the neighborhoods, if not both of them, of whose neighborhoods is, whose neighborhood is next? You know, who gets to draw that name out of the hat?
I would say by senior. No, you're, you're, you're right, Walter.
That's another way to do it.
And you know the answer to it too, because as long as you've been doing it, it's, it's part of the budget process. And when we go into the budget process, the council tells staff and the mayor that, okay, 2017 budget, you are going to put $100,000 in there dedicated to parkland, dedicated, parkland development. That would, to me, that would be the way we would.
Is a way to do it besides a $2 to $5 million bond for, for park construction.
That's the other option, so.
Well, I think there are a couple of ways that the.
Council and staff could approach it and, and certainly doing incremental allocation every year. If that's the council's policy and directions of staff to, to fund that.
You did it with Mountain View.
Correct.
At one time, when Mountain View wouldn't pass by bond to improve the width and length of it, this, the council went to what, 50 grand a year or something toward incrementally improving Mountain View?
And that's happened on a number of projects in capital projects where we funds, where we start to accumulate funds for large projects that we know we cannot fund in a given single year. We could also, as the council considers potentially in the future, some sort of bond measure or other grants and other funding opportunities. I think what Dwight's trying to, to develop right now is what is the number that he needs to be working toward to help guide council in their appropriate approach to try to fund them within a specified timeframe. And so that's really the stage right now. They're, they're concepts, but they're concepts based upon, I think, good input from the neighborhood and good design work by the consultant working with, with staff and the neighborhood. And this will help Dwight develop that budget and to quantify the need. And that'll be up to the council to decide what is the policy for how we're going to fund these.
I agree.
I've got some folks in the audience. I don't know whether you want to, if.
I think they would probably have a lot to say if we were going to sit here and say, we're not going to approve this design. But what we're saying, we do want to approve it. We do want to fund it. We just need to figure out the mechanism. Is there anything that anybody out there can add to that that isn't redundant? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Yeah, you have to come up here. And I, even though we know your name and when your address, you still have to tell us that.
Maureen Taylor Regan, 1810 Lorian Lane. And I was involved, my husband and I are involved in both of the, most of the meetings for the Indian Hills Park. And I just wanted to comment on the Cadillac design, for one thing. I hope you remember, our neighborhood's been waiting for six developments to get a park. And every development there was promised a park. So I wouldn't call it a Cadillac design. It was, that's something all the neighbors, I mean.
Very slow, it's a very slow Cadillac.
Having a, having a restroom to accommodate six developments worth of a neighborhood, I wouldn't call a Cadillac design.
Maureen, it's a, the only reason to me it's a Cadillac is because I can remember when I was 12 years old, playing in undeveloped lots and, and, you know, playing baseball in there. That was, those were definitely undeveloped. But it's, it's, it's a Cadillac from what it could be. But it's certainly worthwhile. And you know, and we talked about priorities and I think she brings up something that's, that's important to note, is that that neighborhood, Indian Hills Development Area, has been promised a park for a long, long, long time. And the other thing I think that is important, when it might come to prioritizing when a park is going to get developed, is if residents of the area actually paid money to develop, to, to purchase the land, as was in this case. Perhaps that's, that's something to think about when it comes to prioritizing.
I can appreciate that, but on the other side, as a former developer, everybody in every developed neighborhood pays money for that donated land because the price of their lots just went up slightly.
I understand that, but this is above and beyond.
True.
And, and we had somebody above and beyond.
Yes, you did.
You did.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Well, we're going to, we're going to, yeah, we're going to recommend adoption, send it to the council. So I can put it on the consent agenda. That's fine. If somebody wants to pull it off, they can do that and then you can talk about the whole thing all over again. But I think it's great. So that's the last thing that we have as far as a regular agenda item. We do have a, a couple of reports, I think, that we've got to talk about. And let's see, what is it? Well, Lisa, yeah. And Bill? Kyle? Kyle's not here. Brownfield's Grants.
Hi. I just want to update you first on the Brownfield Coalition Assessment Grant. We originally started applying for that grant in 2008. That was the year after I came to work for the city. And finally, we were funded in 2010. And now we're at 2015. So it's my longest standing project that's up to date. So the Coalition Assessment Grant, we will be closing out the end of September. And we will be having the second public meeting on the 23rd at the council, or excuse me, at the chamber office in their lobby downtown from 5:00 to 7:00. And getting public input on the projects has always been a requirement of EPA. But now we're going to be sharing the information about what the outputs were and where the money went and that type of thing. Just to kind of summarize for you what happened under the Coalition Assessment Grant. We worked with six properties. The Tribble Property, which is now Canon Press. And they've actually been a, a very good example of, of a project where the property was assessed. We needed to do a few things to it and it actually then met the criteria for commercial development. A new business moved in there. They've hired more people. The building's been remodeled. So it's a very good example of, of, you know, a Brownfield redevelopment project. We had the Old Dumas Seed area, which is under reclamation right now. And then the Dumas Spur, which is now a park area. So, you know, acres of, of green space, that type of thing. The property that we're still working on and will continue to work on for a few more months is the Sixth and Jackson property. And it's been our, basically our biggest project to date that the URA owns. And then we have the Sharp property, which is where Domino's Pizza was and the area over on the, where you turn. Yeah, over off of Highway 95 and Highway 8 where they split. That property has been assessed. We're doing additional testing while monitoring right now. At this point, I'm told it's, it may be for sale or it may not. I don't know. We're not sure yet at this point.
How much of that property is actually, comes into play when it comes to having to check, test for ground contamination?
There was offsite, probable offsite contamination on that property.
Was there?
So we did a phase, you know, we did a, two phase twos. There was one that was done previously and then we did another one in 2014 and they're doing additional testing now. But there were monitoring wells offsite on the other property adjacent to it. There was also some contamination within the building where Domino's was as far as vapors. And so they're retesting for that. And so actually this, we had an additional task order that was issued for this property, which will use up the balance of our petroleum money. And we don't have the final report yet. It'll be coming out by the end of the month. And then we also had the Fountain Property that's down off of Nursery Street for a future development of an industrial park.
So even though you're wrapping up the grant as of September 30, the work is not complete?
We'll be finishing up what we can fund under this grant for the Sixth and Jackson and the additional testing for the Sharp Property. The rest of the properties are finished. And I'll probably answer the rest of your questions as I go along here if I can.
All right. You, you know, you understand my question?
Yes, I do. At this point, I'm just going through and making sure I'm not missing anything. I just wanted to go over the funding numbers with you guys. We have the website that has all of the reports on it, up to date. We have a few reports that I need to add to it, but any information that anybody wants regarding the testing, the assessments, all of that, they're all available online in addition to the quarterly reports. To date, on the properties, the 207 North Main, which was the Sharp, or not the, I mean, the Tribble Property now, Canon Press, $39,857 was spent on that property. To date on Sixth and Jackson, $110,492. And we have approximately another 10, maybe 15,000 out of the assessment grant that will go out on that property. The Old Dumas Seed Property, which is the one that's under reclamation, was 75,000.
How much?
75,000. The Fountain Property, 42,540. And right now, to date, on the Sharp Property, which is 1102 South Main, we've spent 80,287 and we have another 8,500 to spend.
And these are all assessments, not remediation?
This is assess, phase one, phase two assessments, yes.
But not remediations?
No.
Cleanup plans, but not remediations.
Correct.
But not cleanup, cleanup plans, but not cleanup.
Right. And the only one that we've actually done cleanup planning on is the Sixth and Jackson Property. On the Dumas Spur Property, $29,637. And in addition to the assessments, there's other requirements as far as like a QAP, a Quality Assurance plan that has to go along with the assessment plan. So there's other different steps and things that you have to pay for in addition to that. Right now, at this point, we had two sets of funding under this grant. We have petroleum of 99,250. And then under hazardous substances, and let me step back. Petroleum, we only had the Sharp Property under that category that qualified for petroleum funding. The other five properties all fill under the hazardous substances. And we had a total funding amount of 375,750. We have approximately 50,000 remaining in that. So we'll have a little bit that probably won't get used up. We're going to be doing these additional public outreach. And then we'll be doing a brochure that talks about the total benefits of the project and that type of thing for an ongoing information. And then we'll still be required to update what's called the acre system. It's the reporting system that EPA has you put your data into. And it will need to continue to report on development, like on the Lola Clyde Park, I'll be putting in how many acres of green space Canon Press, the job creation. So even though the ground will be closing out the end of September and we have 60 days to do all the funnel reports, we're required to report for like the next five years. And that's, if you want to apply and get additional funding, you really need to keep that acres data up to date because they'll check to make sure that you do that, so.
Is September 30 a given date or a selected date?
We had.
Is the date given to us by the grantor?
Yes.
Or is the date selected by us as the grantee?
We had one, a one-year project extension on that grant and that was the date we selected that we thought we could get everything completed.
And you're going to have 50,000 and change left over?
Possibly.
What happens to that?
It'll go back into the, the pool for someone else in Region 10.
Any way we can use it?
We've tried. We've tried. It's, it's, at this point in time, to get another property eligible, there isn't enough time. And we've, we've worked with as many property owners as we can. There's been five or six properties that have been brought forth that weren't eligible.
You've done everything you could and should on the properties that are involved.
Yes.
So you give in your grant total?
No reimbursement for this, for this, for your time with the city?
No, not on this one.
Okay.
And you give in the grant total we spent?
Um, the total grant was 475,000. So I anticipate that we'll probably spend, spend at least 425, 430.
About 50,000 we will spend. What was the match on that? Do you remember?
There wasn't match on this one, yeah.
So that was, okay, good.
Yeah. However, I would say that this last year, this project is probably, well, I've been through three project managers with this. There was first Travis Carey was here. He was the first person that worked on the project with me. Then Jeff worked on it and now Kyle. And then Bill's working with us on the cleanup grants. So as those different staffing changes, a lot more came back to me to work on. I would say this last year with Jeff being gone, I probably spent 50% of my time on this project.
Really?
So, yeah. I'll move on now to the Sixth and Jackson Grant, which is a cleanup grant we have through EPA. And I'm going to kind of just go over a basis and then I'm going to let Bill kind of talk about where we are at this point and what we'll be doing. Through the assessment grant, we've been able to take Sixth and Jackson right up to, to being ready to contract out for cleanup. And so we've been working on the cleanup planning on that. And that's been about $25,000 so far to date. And we'll spend maybe another 30, 35,000. Or excuse me, another 15,000 probably I'm thinking on cleanup of what we haven't been invoiced for from Terrocarifices this point. So we went through a process of having to go back and retrace some steps when IDQ came in and decided that they wanted us to go through the voluntary cleanup program, which happened a little over two years ago. We anticipated being done with this project by now. But, so we worked with them and that created some additional work. They wanted additional information in the work plan. So we've been, you know, going through and following the steps that they've required us to do over the last year and a half. And we're to a point now where we're all in agreement, but there's been a lot of work that had to be done to get us to that point and a lot of different steps in the assessment planning. And we just recently had what's called an ABCA. And that's an analysis of Brownfield's cleanup plan put out for 30-day comment. And we had to have that 30-day comment period end before we could move forward. And that ended on Friday and there was no comment on it. And in the meantime, we've been working to update the budget. And we are going to be receiving an additional 85,000 under the cleanup grant in order to cover everything we need to do to bring the Sixth and Jackson Property ready for.
Speak up just a little bit.
Under the cleanup grant, we're going to be applying for, and it's, we have to submit an application to get it, but it's already in the, the region and ready for us, 85,000 dollars to be able to finish up all the work we need to do on the Sixth and Jackson Property. And so we're in the process right now of updating our work plan. And then Bill's been working the other side of it and getting the design and everything ready for construction. And he put out quotes and he got those results last week. So I'll let him share that with you. Our goal, you know, is to get this one project, the Coalition Grant, closed out. And then we were hoping to be done with the next one in the next six months. So I'll let Bill talk to you about construction and where we're headed from here.
Yeah, as Elisa mentioned, the assessment, the Coalition Grant was an assessment grant. So we've cleaned up, uh, we've completed all the assessment work. Uh, we've now gone through two ABCs. Uh, the initial constituent concern was deldron in shallow soils. Uh, DQ came in with some input and some concern about the potential, uh, presence of nutrients in deeper soils and groundwater. Uh, so additional sampling was undertaken. It was identified that there were nutrients in the soils and in the groundwater on the site. It's shallow groundwater, it's not any, any water source that anybody's using for consumption, but it did, it did identify that there were some nutrients on the site that needed to be addressed. Uh, so a second ABCA had to be completed to go through the assessment of the cleanup alternatives for the nutrients on the site. And ultimately, this, the selective remediation included the deep excavation of soils in two locations where there was a previously a bulk fertilizer tank on the property in the late seventies and then another location in the southwest corner of the property that could have been a washout or location. There was nothing that showed up on aerofotographs that would indicate that as a location of, of nutrients, but it had, it did come up in the soil sampling.
Do you have an idea how many cubic feet it's going to have to be replaced?
Uh, we will be exporting about 2,200 cubic yards off the site. Uh, so there, the excavation areas are generally maybe 20 to 30 feet in size, 15 feet in depth and then slope back to meet, uh, safety requirements for that depth of excavation. Uh, so we have identified about 2,200 yards that will be exported off the site. There's probably another 200 cubic yards that we removed, uh, because there is an, a existing tunnel that used to go from the silos to the flower mill that was on the Sixth and Jackson property. And so we'll go ahead and chase that out and decommission that and fill that in as we go. Uh, we, we have broken out the project into two phases. Phase was, phase one includes the excavation of the, of the soils, the establishment of a new sanitary sewer connection and then the compacted replacement and completion of the excavation work. A phase two will include the installation of six wells on the site. We'll have three extraction, well, four extraction and three injection wells to do the groundwater remediation. And so we'll be pumping the contaminated groundwater into the sanitary sewer system for treatment at the wastewater treatment plant and then injecting kind of a lactate amendment that helps break down the nitrates quicker in the groundwater and through the injection wells. So that'll be phase two. Uh, we did put phase one out to bid.
I know you said it, but I'll, I'll get you to say it again. You're going to put six wells on that, on that site that's not a whole lot bigger than this room?
There's about six already on it, uh, monitoring wells, but correct, there'll be six wells, they're, they're small four-inch diameter wells. Um, that's at least the preliminary concept design that was developed through the ABCA process. We will place that project out for a design build, um, RFP in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we did place the construction project out for bid and we did get a bid result that is about 10,000 underneath the estimate, so the agency will be reviewing those bid results on, uh, the 23rd next week to authorize moving forward on the project for the excavation component of the work.
They're a quote?
It's a quote. So it was under 100,000. Uh, and so we did go through, we furnished it to five different contractors, received one quote back, uh, at the end of the, end of the day.
Everybody too busy?
Everybody is fairly occupied right now, yes.
And keep in mind that the, the cleanup grant is, um, the grantee is the, um, URA.
URA is the agency.
Not the city.
And, uh, begs the question, why am I sitting here listening to this?
Well, we're giving you an overall project update.
So you know, what is the timeframe for getting this done?
Where's, where's the soil going to go?
Soil's going to go, uh, south of town onto, uh, Germer's site. So, uh, Larry Germer is doing some, uh, petroleum contamination from the Goodman Oil site. He'll be doing some land farming. He's going to be land farming some of the petroleum. Uh, the intent is to blend some of our, our material because some of our nutrients help break, uh, help speed up the petroleum degradation process.
For the deal.
Uh, and then they'll do land application on farm lands adjacent to his petroleum land application site. And so, uh, we're anticipating that to be the site of disposal where we have prepared MOA between the agency and Larry for that to occur and that will also be reviewed by the agency on, uh, Wednesday of next week. So we'd expect the excavation work to be done by the middle of October, move into phase two for the groundwater, have that system installed by the end of November and then we will probably be in a period of pump and treat for maybe three to four months and then we'll be doing some sampling to see if we have reached the compliance mark. If we have, then we can close out and decommission.
Did you say by next November?
No, this November.
This November, yeah.
So, and then we will pump and treat for what we anticipate to be two to three months and then we'll do sampling to see how we are in the groundwater. If we've met compliance, then we can decommission the pump and treat system and then the property will undergo the redevelopment.
All this has to be done before any development can be done.
It does.
Before your land can be sowed?
Well, we will, we are pursuing the acquisition of a conditional certificate completion and covenant not to sue where all the active construction work will be complete. The agency will have the ongoing obligation to maintain and operate the pump and treat system. They'll be designed to be subsurface, um, and we have to operate that until we reach compliance in the groundwater for the nitrate concentrations. We're anticipating that to be fairly quick with the amendment that we'll be introducing and the, uh, contaminated material that we'll be removing from the site. So we are hopeful.
And you're going to backfill the hole with what?
We'll backfill, fill the hole, we have about 1,200 cubic...
Larry Germer's doing.
Well, we have 1,200 cubic yards actually that came off the well 10 site that we're stockpiling off of College Street. So if you've seen the piles of dirt on the old Brockie property site, we've got 1,200 cubic, uh, yards of material there waiting to be utilized. We'll also use some, some crushed aggregate backfill as well.
Okay, and the entire cost of the, of the remediation is how much?
The remediation, right now, we're estimating about 187,000 dollars total cost for remediation. And that will be entirely grant funded with the agency contributing around 13,000 in cash match and we have some additional in-kind matches being provided by staff for that grant.
I think it's important to note that this is not costing the city of Moscow.
This is not costing the city of Moscow, that's correct.
No. Um, no. Um, you know, the, the assessment grant, other than staff time, um, has not been at a cost to the city either, so.
So that's what you've got for us?
Any questions?
When this is complete, at, at what point does the, the street realignment take place? Is that the first thing that goes on?
So for the Sixth and Jackson, street realignment and design will happen through this winter. That project will probably place a bid in January or February in the spring for construction to happen, probably as soon as U of I lets out for the summer. Uh, so the actual frontage and, and lane realignment work, we'd anticipate to be construction in the upcoming summer season.
And the Si, the Sixth Street, we still don't have approval for, for Jackson?
We have conceptual approval for Jackson from ITD with the exception of the Jimmy Jane, Jimmy John's turn lane just north of this site. So that, that still is the one remaining element. The concept of doing a curb extension on the south side of the intersection on Jackson and establishing on-street parking on the east side of Jackson along the agency's, west side of Jackson along the agency's property has been approved by ITD. Uh, the removal of the right turn lane from a Jimmy John's is the one remaining item.
And the realignment of Sixth Street is not going to affect construction permits for Sangria?
No, no.
Good. And I think that's the, uh, you're done.
Mm-hmm.
Unless we have questions for Elisa. Thank you very much. And we're over our allotted time, but we don't have any admin committee, so we're going to go on. I want to hear your report.
You can postpone it if you like, I'd be happy to provide it.
Let's, okay, we're into admin and we're going to talk about construction activity reports.
Mr. Representative of Admin, I will allow that.
You will allow that?
May we sit in admin with you? Uh, may we sit in with you on that?
Go ahead.
Ten minutes? Are you okay?
There's your timeframe, Bill, I can't...
We're, we're still in public works, actually. We're not in admin.
No, I'm, no, I'm...
She says she's got to go home.
Yeah, I've got, I've got five minutes. I've been getting five minutes here. We'll see if we can get this done. Okay, so I wanted to provide just kind of an update to the committee on what we're seeing, both in economic indicators as well as construction activity in the community. I'm going to flip through this fairly quick, but, um, as we all know, we've gone through a period over the course of the last six, seven years, uh, some very, fairly difficult economic times across the nation and, uh, we've also seen that here locally. Um, this graph here is just showing total Latah County, uh, employments. The red line is total employed individuals and the blue line is unemployment rate on percentage on the left-hand axis. Uh, you can see our most challenging point was in 2009 when unemployment was nearly 7% in Latah County and the workforce was just a little over 16,000. Uh, since that time, unemployment has steadily decreased and reached 4.1% in 2014 as of Ju, August of this year, it has been holding steady at 4.1%. And employment has gone from 16,500 up to about 18,300 and it's been holding somewhat steady at that level since about 2011. Uh, so overall, unemployment has been declining while employment has been increasing and so we are seeing improvement in local, in local economy.
It's interesting to note though, Bill, that in 2009, even though unemployment jumped to 6.8%, we had 130 more people employed.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's an odd thing that that bumped that, that one year.
Yep.
Um, as you look at per capita income and the, and the latest that we could receive from the state was in 2013, uh, Latah County is shown in bright green, blue is State of Idaho and the dark blue is the United States. As you can see, overall, historically, we have, uh, lagged behind the State of Idaho up until about 2012, which was the first point in time that we actually surpassed the State of Idaho in per capita income as a whole. But as you look from 2009, you can see the reduction in per capita income from '08 to 2009 where we saw a fairly sizable, uh, de, decrease in per capita employment or per capita income. Uh, since that point in time, we've seen about 18% increase over the last four years. So, uh, while employment's increasing, unemployment's decreasing and per capita is on the rise. So those are all good overall economic indicators. There are a number of, uh, others when we look at some of the NIAI classifications from BLS. Uh, these are industry types and this is the total number of establishments comparing the third quarter of 13 to the third quarter of 14. Uh, Latah County is shown in green and Whitman County is shown in blue. Anything on the right side of the line is an increase in the total number of establishments, the number of businesses themselves. Anything on the left is a, is a decrease. So you can see there are fairly, there are a large number of sectors. Uh, construction was a significant growth sector. Uh, education and health services, leisure and hospitality were all sectors where we saw, um, positive growth and total of all industries, we saw about a 2.5% increase uh, between quarter to quarter of 13 to 14. At the same time, you can see that there are some areas, we saw financial activities was one area where we saw a decrease of about 5% and manufacturing was an area we saw a decrease of about 3%. Um, but overall, we had, in the number of establishments in these individual categories, we saw positive growth in a large number of them. Uh, Whitman County saw some significant reductions in education and health services, information, trade, transportation, utilities and service providing. If we're to look at the quarterly wages, again, third quarter of 13 to third quarter of 14, um, same color scheme here with Latah County in green and Whitman County in blue. We saw substantial increases in total quarterly wages up into the 18 to 19%. Um, 16% in construction, so we had about 19% in information services, 18.8% in business and professional services, leisure and hospitality as well. So overall, we had about a 5% increase in, uh, total quarterly wages across all sectors uh, from quarter to quarter. So both in the number of establishments appear to be growing as well as total quarterly wages over that time period. Uh, looking to construction activity, we've probably looked at this many times in the past. Historically, we've averaged about 120 units, uh, permitted for construction every year, which includes a mix of about 40 single-family homes, 14 to 15 two-family dwellings and about 66 multifamily dwellings. We had a large number of units, uh, placed under construction during very active, active uh, period in the housing cycle between 2000 and 2009. At that point, we had about 1,750 units permitted in that time period, uh, which was substantially higher than our traditional averages. Uh, on commercial construction, by valuation, we historically permit about 6 million per year, uh, over the last 12 years. You can see housing starts, both total starts and single-family, uh, the, the nation as a whole began the slide in 2006 and really hit the bottom in 2009. Uh, that correlates with all of our employment and other, uh, indicators in 2009 and we've been seeing some moderate growth since that point. Again, the nation as a whole hasn't, hasn't recovered to the levels, um, that were the pre-recession rates, but they are seeing some overall growth. You'll see the total housing starts tend to outpace single-family because the multifamily sector has been stronger in the marketplace than single-family across the nation as a whole. Um, our housing starts tend to be fairly noisy. Uh, the purple is the total dwelling units, green is, uh, is the multifamily, blue is single-family and the red is two-family dwellings. And so you can see that we have, uh, you know, we tend to have about a cycle about every eight years where we see increased construction activity and a decline of activity, a peak again and a decline. This was that big buildup in the 2000 to 2009 time period where we had a large number of units permitted for construction, but since that time, single-family for us has been about half of historical averages, right around 20 to the mid twenties, uh, units per year since that time period. While single-family or multifamily continues periodically to have large-scale projects here in 2009 was the Grove, which was responsible for about 192 of about the 210 total units we permitted that year, uh, for construction. Uh, looking more closely, again, just the last, uh, 10 years from 2004 to 2014, you can kind of see the overall trend. Again, I guess it was 216 units of which the Grove was 192 in 2009. But single-family has gone from, 60 was a bit higher than our historical averages, but we've been down to 20 to 26, 22, uh, per year since 2009.
Back up one second if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
You're, you're, with all the activity on White Avenue, you're still only, you're only at 70 for 14?
That was 2014.
That happened in 15?
Much of that was permitted in 15.
Okay.
Or some was permitted in 15. Uh, if we were to look comparisons then from January of this year to August, uh, between 2014 and 15, the one big difference I would point to is single-family has seen, uh, significant increase. In that same time period last year, we had permitted 15 single-family homes. Uh, at this point, we've permitted 25 and we have a, a number of others currently under review. Uh, we're expecting this calendar year that we'll finish up into the 30s to low 30s, so we are seeing quite a bit of increase in the single-family, uh, sector. Uh, multifamily, we've actually only seen 24 units this year, so the 70, the 24 really combines to half of Kestrel, which is a large project on White Avenue. Um, but overall, uh, single-family, we are seeing a significant increase in, in the market this year. Looking at commercial construction...
Single families are primarily occurring what part of town?
Well, primarily occurring in the east part of town, so, um, we're Southgate, uh, Indian Hills, eight, so in Southgate Third Edition, for example, there are quite a few units being constructed in Temple Commons, which is a PUD.
Right, okay.
Um, we're also seeing homes being constructed on a couple of other lots in Southgate Third Edition. We are seeing homes, uh, being built in Rolling Hills Eighth Edition, which was near the park that, the Itani Park that, that Dwight just mentioned, so we've got four or five there. Uh, and then, uh, we're starting, we have some under review for, uh, construction in Indian Hills Sixth Edition when that gets completed. Um, so they're kind of happening in a variety of different places, but there's quite a few, actually quite a few happening right now in, in Temple Commons. There are, I think, eight units that have been permitted for construction just in that one project this year. Uh, looking at commercial activity, as I mentioned, 6, 6 million is about our annual average for last year. We were about 15, or 2014, we finished with about 15.1 million in activity. Again, a large number of that, a large percentage of that was, were school district projects. So the renovation work in the school district, the bathrooms, uh, gyms, bare den work, um, factored into that number, but it was a fairly active year on the commercial front.
Construction at the University of Vital doesn't count?
Does not hit that valuation, no. And we'll talk about a couple of projects on the U of I here real quickly. Just thought I'd highlight a couple of projects. Uh, I think the, you know, the anchor project down here on First and Main turned out very nice. You remember that was the Damon Insurance Building? That's a picture before and that's a picture after, so Lodge Pole, um, Restaurant is in this, this wing, um, Humble Burger's going in here and then this space has yet to be identified, but three, uh, commercial tenants in that space and the building really looks very, very nice. They did a great job on that and it fits into the downtown very well. Um, we've had Starbucks, renovation of the Sherman Williams Building and Panda Express that's now moved in adjacent, just north of Starbucks in that building. The Buffalo Wild Wings project is now complete, I think I need a new picture. Uh, looks very nice and seems to be doing well there.
Hopping on Saturday.
Very busy. Uh, Jimmy John's is across from the Sixth and Jackson Agency property, cor, at the north, east, northwest corner of Sixth and Jackson. Uh, we also had Culligan constructed a new facility last year. Minekey built their facility.
Was that a totally new Culligan building?
Completely new building.[1721.53] Completely new building.
I just found it.
Yeah.
What was there?
Uh, the Minneke, it was constructed up at Rodeo in 95 North Main. Uh, we had the Merrill Apartments out on White Avenue, and the Kestrel Apartments also on White Avenue, so we had quite a bit of multifamily activity happening on White Avenue this year. Of course, we've, we constructed the school district community playfields, that project turned out very well, and just getting that wrapped up. And then we had Rolling Hills Eighth Edition Phase 1 get complete, and houses under construction there. And then Indian Hills Sixth, Phases 2 and 3 is under construction. I think it's paved in, curbing's in, I think they're finishing up sidewalks, and that should be wrapped up hopefully by near the end of this month. Um, so, so those two subdivisions, and we also have, which we don't have a picture of, is Southgate Third Edition, third phase, under construction right now as well. Um, so as I mentioned, other projects, we had a number of the school district facility improvements, uh, the Domino's Pizza relocation to the University of Points, the Hungan Dunga Brewery, the old Stewkey's Seed--
Dunk property.
--property, tapped restaurant at 210 South Main. Uh, in the old Martins Building, there's a new restaurant and then a wine bar under consideration, as well as a production facility for the Sisters Cookie Company, and the Rancun Raye Brewery that the council's seen before on the parking lease request in the--
Where's 210 South Main?
It's at 210 South Main. It's, it's, uh, on the east side of Main, uh, between Third and Second.
Two businesses up from the Hong Kong Cafe.
Yep.
Up north?
North, yeah.
South of Second, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, and then, as I mentioned, Southgate Third Edition for residential subdivision is under construction right now, and they're hoping to pave in here in the next month or so.
You know how many units are in there off the top of your head?
Well, I want to say there's 18 to 20 lots in that phase. Um, there's a number of other projects on, underway on campus, so for large capital projects, the IREC Building, that's a $49 million science facility under construction right now on campus, as well as the College of Education renovation, that's a $17 million project there, so, you know, for, there has not been capital projects under construction of that scale for quite some time on the University of Idaho campus, so it's good to see that investment happening on the campus. And then the university completed the Sixth Street Traffic Calming Project this summer on Sixth Street on the main pedestrian mall on campus. Uh, a couple other upcoming projects that we, we are anticipating, so the Sangria Grill project on the Sixth and Jackson Agency property, which would be a new mixed-use, um, project, two-story, including restaurants as well as residential above. We expect to see that through review this winter for construction next year. Uh, Gritman Medical is, has a, a large medical office, three-story medical office building that they're constructing on the triangle right across Main Street from the hospital.
E-trangle.
Yep. Uh, and just about filling that triangle up with that building, so it's gonna be, just about filling it up. It's about a 45,000 square foot, um, building.
How close are they to actually?
We've got a site plan in, uh, that's under review. We expect the building package in the next week or so. Um, and they want to get foundation going this fall as soon as possible. So that, that project is moving forward. Uh, right now, we're valuing the shell at a little over six, six and a half million dollars for the shell, and then they'll be doing TI on top of that for medical services. Uh, Staples and Petco is currently ongoing in the old Office Depot location, so Petco is moving into half of that space, and Staples is moving into the other half. Uh, Petco is well underway with the hope that they'll get to a, a, finish out on the project in the next 30 days. And Staples, we actually haven't received plans yet, but we anticipate they're coming here shortly. Um, we also have activity happening on the Stubbs Seed Warehouse, two different developers, one looking at the commercial warehouse on the Troy Highway frontage, and another looking at residential, multifamily residential development on the south side of Paradise Creek, between Paradise Creek and the old Domino's location. So we've got some concept designs in on a few of those, and we expect those projects to be happening next year as well. And then the Quad Cities Nissan dealership has moved into the former Ambassador Auto